...special town meeting order. I'm sorry, we've been doing a lot of work going on in the town hall. We haven't been using the green room much. We do not have access to a microphone. So you're gonna have to listen to my voice, whoever is up here, and whoever is speaking, if we do those questions, is going to have to speak loudly or come up to the front and face the crowd so that people can hear the questions. All right, I call a special town meeting to order. First order of business is to elect the moderator.
Nominate Phil Single.
Second?
All right, I have a nomination for Phil Single. Do we have any nominations?
I have Willie Fritz.
You have a second on Willie Fritz. Second, all right? Any other nominations?
We move to closing nominations.
Most are closed nominations, closed nominations. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Okay. By showing hands, all those in favor of Phil Single, please signify by raising your hand. Phil Single, please count, the registrars, please count hands for Phil Single. Hold, make sure you're not counting when he's...
I know, where is she counting? I don't know where she is. Have you counted?
No, I haven't started yet.
Okay, I'll go over here.
Forty.
Forty. Okay. All those in favor of Willie Fritz as moderator, raise your hands, please.
All right, I've already got forty. Do you want total?
And I have twenty.
You got forty-one, at least.
I got a twenty-nine.
You did right here.
I did this whole...
All right. Ninety-one.
If I, Willie Fritz, am elected moderator, okay, I'd like this town clerk to read the notice of special town meeting.
And this is the legal notice, Town of Clinton, Special Town Meeting. The electors of the Town of Clinton and all other citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the said Town of Clinton are hereby notified and warned that a special town meeting will be held at 6:15 PM on Wednesday, December 12, 2012, at the Andrews Memorial Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Connecticut, to hear and consider the following. Resolved to appropriate $20,000 from undesignated towards a matching grant for the Stanton House as proposed by the Essex Savings Bank for a historic structures report, and resolved to approve the purchase of 69-69A Killinworth Turnpike for the purpose of the new Morgan School, dated at Clinton, Connecticut, the 20th day of November, 2012, signed by William W. Fritz Jr. for his selection, and this was published in the Harbor News on December 6 this year.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the call as read.
Don't move.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the call? This is just approving the call. All in favor of approving the call as read? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Okay. Resolution one, to appropriate $20,000 from the undesignated fund bound towards a matching grant for the Stanton House as proposed by the Essex Savings Bank for a historic structures report. Do I have a motion on that?
Don't move.
To approve? I have a second on it. Any discussion on that? Mrs. Gold. Go ahead, that's fine. Take your time. You can do it right from there, don't get up.
Okay. I would ask all of you to support this appropriation. For a century, our Town of Clinton has benefited from the Stanton House and the Stanton House trust. We have put very little money, if anything, into this, to the museum. This is one of the major museums in New England. Now, the trust fund is depleted, and if the Stanton House is able to, capable of applying for grants from state and federal and historic, it needs, it requires that they have these historical architectural drawings and a survey. So, the Town of Clinton doesn't want to support this. I would say that we owe it to future generations to preserve the Stanton House and to give it, provide this seed money, that they can go to be able to maintain this house for the next generation. Amen.
Any other, any comments, questions regarding the Stanton House appropriations? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All she cares. Okay, so resolution two, resolved to approve the purchase of 69-69A Killinworth Turnpike for the purpose of the new Morgan School. I have a motion to approve. Second? I have a motion in a second. Discussion on this?
Yeah, how much?
How much?
$350,000. You don't have to put the price in because the money was approved in referendum to buy additional property that is needed for the school.
I wish to object. I think that the fact that it's been approved, it could be 65 million, it could be $1. Under what, under that approval...
And it could be 80 million to build the parking lot, or 2 million to build the parking lot.
Right. I think it's, I think it's very inappropriate to not have the amount in the resolution. And I, and I...
It wasn't a secret, it was discussed in the building committee.
But I officially object to the resolution as written.
You missed your, you missed your chance.
I don't think so. I just objected, and we've got it videoed.
No, excuse me. When the call was read and approved, that was your opportunity. The call has been approved. Okay.
I think you're, I think you're incorrect.
I am. That's fine. Do I have any questions? Just get it. Excuse me. Do I have any questions, comments? No, no point of order. I'm running the meeting. Excuse me.
Point of order, if you can, people can, that's what point of order is.
No. Excuse me, you have a question in the back?
Yes, I was, I was wondering why we're paying 350 when it's on the market for only 329.
There were two appraisals done, okay? One was 365, one was a 340. With the property owned, we ended up splitting the difference at 350.
Doesn't answer the question.
But it's on the market. I mean, it's listed on the market for 329.
I think that's a little listening. The house hasn't been listed.
No, it says, well, I just got this off, says it's been on for 61 days.
Yeah, I don't believe that's, that's on the market. I've been, I've been negotiating with the property. Okay, any other questions?
No. There was no price given in the resolution, so we objected the resolution.
You can vote it down then. You can't object to the resolution without voting it down. When we go to a vote, you can then at that point vote it down. We're not required to put a price.
Is that price that we have that's in that resolution, are we gonna have to do another vote if we go over that price with any other extra cost in that? Or is that the maximum amount of money that we're gonna spend?
If the total project goes over, which is not anticipated, and the building committee and the, and the architect and the, and the construction manager know what this is, if the total project, which they say it won't, goes over 64.75 million dollars, they would have to come back the money. They will not have to come back for money.
Mr. Fritz, I think it was very interesting that we had absolutely no objection to the resolution for preservation. The house that sits on this property was built in 1800 on a farm that was owned by a Minuteman who was at Lexington and Concord. He was there when the shot heard round the world was fired. He and his family lived in that house for 143 years. And last night, I asked Jerry Veese, the chairman of the Morgan Building Committee, how it was gonna be, how it would be disposition on that, and he said one of the options is to demolish it. I think that would be tragic. If everyone in here is for preservation, you ought to think twice about buying this property to demolish a home that's over 200 years old.
What's going to happen, and I thought, and I'm again, meeting with the property owner, the house now, because possession of town, will be evaluated. There are, there are local entities that actually have approached about dismantling the house and moving the house. That is what we're seeking to do in best case scenario. If that house has been compromised historically over the years, once it's evaluated, and one of the building committee members is here who's adamant about trying to preserve that house, any way we can preserve that house, we will. But if it has been compromised historically where it has no significant value historically, and David, I don't know if you want to jump on this or not.
Yes, sir, I'm happy to.
Right.
We frankly, until we're in a position where we know, or we're beginning to know more specifically what the architect's plans are, as well as the hopeful approval of the purchase of property, at which point we can then have an intelligent and in-depth conversation as to the disposition of the historical structure. You may rest assured, sir, that my point of view in regard to the structures, do everything we can to maintain it in the best reasonable capacity. But that, to date, that discussion has not been held, and, and I think the term demolition should not be used in any way, shape, or form.
That's what was used last night. I didn't, I didn't pry it out of it.
In my opinion, again, the discussion, three scenarios were given. One was dismantling and moving, one was moving, and the other was demolition. Those were the three scenarios Jerry gave last night.
I mean, the problem is, is that Mr. Townsend also told us that you spend a million dollars a year to maintain the current Morgan, which turned out not to be true. Jerry Veese told us on March 15th, I told us on March 15th, that the, that the soil test would be done before the purchase of the homes, but the soil test didn't come out till 63 days after. There's no credibility here. You're losing your credibility.
I think there's a lot of credibility.
Well, not with me.
You, you, and I appreciate your opinions, and I appreciate spending your time to try to develop information, to develop those opinions, and, you know, I can give you credit for that.
So how do you respond to the timeline?
We don't necessarily agree with your opinions either. That's, that's, that's the way the world is.
How do you respond to the timeline, where the, how do you respond to the point of the timeline where...
We had a phase one environmental done. The phase one showed no, no concerns with the historic use of the property. Based on that, we went ahead with the purchase of the property. Based on other properties in town owned by the same company slash family that were, had been developed as residential and such, we had, there were no concerns mentioned. There was nothing red to black. So we went forward with the purchase of the property.
And then, and then concerns have come since then?
No, there haven't been concerns. No concerns that even the DEP is going to mandate us doing anything beyond managed material on site. That's where there's a difference of opinion and a difference of how facts are put forward.
Willie, speaking of facts, the facts are that that property was purchased long before that testing took place. The referendum was passed on April 12. That property was purchased on April 27.
The testing had been going on here a long time.
The testing had been going on at a minimum level. The in-depth testing should reflect what the actual chemicals were that were on that, which will play a long after sale of the property. That property was sold in a, in a heartbeat to the town. That purchase was made without the knowledge of myself on the court of law. I read about it later, that that purchase had been done two weeks after the referendum. That was shoved down our throats without, without the information that was necessary. And Willie, no sense, but this is why you should not be moderator, because you are a totally biased person in this house.
Right.
And this is...
Yeah, right. Thank you. Thank you. His staff.
This property is going to be purchased with use for Morgan School. Has soil testing been done? Do we have the results?
No, it hasn't.
Then why are we buying it?
Based on, based on, and based on the surrounding uses, and there seems to be no concern with our money.
Point of order, are you acting as the moderator or spokesman for this question?
People are asking questions, I'm answering.
I don't think you should be moderating the meeting then, sir. I apologize, but you're cutting off conversation that people want, questions that people have.
I ask, why are we talking, rehashing the whole school thing when it's been passed? Why can't we just get back to the... So, I attended the meeting last night with a presentation of the new Morgan, and it wasn't clear to me where this house falls in that property.
If you look at the proposed layout of the property, it would be...
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Where does this house fall in the area of the property that they showed last night? It would be basically in that burn they talked about building up in front of the school to hide the, the view of the school from the street, kind of mask it. And that pedestrian rock walk driveway that they were showing, that would basically be in that area at this point.
So, is it, I have to refer to that question. This is through my not understanding necessarily all this process. Is it possible to rewrite the motion so that the disposition of the house is included in the motion? Because as a preservationist, I'd like to see the facts.
Yeah, I doubt we would ever do that. You know, because we're not gonna bind up, find the town's hand or the building committee's hand based on disposition of that property. Again, there are three things we want to, that are out there. There's one, moving the house, having somebody committed to its sale, and the last one, the last, last thing is we want, whatever we want to do would be demolish that house.
There's one more option. There's a fourth option for the historical antique house. We renovated a little bit, and we use it for the superintendent's office.
I'd like to know, if they decide to move this house, where is the money gonna come from?
Other.
If they decide to move the house, where's the money coming from?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's two options. Maybe we get, maybe get a private guy to come in and want to do that, and be willing to take that on, which if somebody would like to come in and dismantle and take it away, that would be private. Or two would be come to the town and say, we're gonna move this house, and then we'd like to do... Potentially. That's not right, it's wrong.
And we're gonna have to pay out more because we have more...
It's all part of the overall environmental plan that's built into the budget of the project. Mr. Catherine?
Hang on one second, folks. I just wanted to step up here for a minute. We just unanimously voted to, to take up a piece of property that had a great antique value to us and to preserve it. We took $20,000, which was another $20,000, and now that this Stanton House over here has $40,000 in preservation money to preserve a building.
Please speak up.
I have a call, I'm sorry. I'll do my best, okay? We, we just, we just unanimously voted to restore, to give money to, to an antique house which is really treasured to us up on, on, on Route 1 here. And, and in that, there was not one question because we knew the value of what we had in our merchants in our town. We have another treasured piece of property. I want to thank Mr. Townsend tonight for his interjection because, I don't know if you've known it, I put a little bit of effort into town in preserving some of the lamps in town that were the gas lamps in front of the post office, the lamps that went, Willie's more than willing, some of the preservation. I've been involved in, I love old iron, I love old things. Our home is cherished, you know, that way. And, and I just wanted to say that if there was an ounce tonight that we could maybe incorporate this into our school and honor maybe a school name after this Minuteman, if there was a chance that we could honor the family that carried this farm through, if there was a chance that we could save and salvage this building and to purchase it and incorporate it somehow lovely with the rest of the building, that would be an option that I think that some of us would probably want to see. We don't want to see something like a quality home being trashed. I think we care about our community. I think we really enjoy the historic value, some of the greatest buildings. Look what we're doing in renovation, Willie's doing renovations on our town hall. All of those things that mean so much to us and the quality of our town hall or our, our town, and, and that really means an awful lot to me. And, and sometimes when there's fundraisers, there's different things that we could do to try and come up with that. We are a community that really knows how to get stuff done. We really do. Tonight, I would like to see the possibility, and only a possibility, because I'm just one of many of really good people in this town, really good people. We're concerned about financial issues, we're concerned about where are we going as a community, we're community, we're concerned. Everybody here is concerned. And you know what? A lot of you are really treasured friends. A lot of you are really good people, and I appreciate the, the output and the outcry tonight to be so concerned because that tells you we really care. It really tells you that we care. This building, I don't want to see it disappear. I don't want to see that quality of our town. That's been a wonderful, wonderful, historic piece of property that we've had. The barns that are there is what I have on my home. The older styles what I have on my home. I enjoy all of that, the old farm tractors, all of that. And I just would really hope that we could preserve it in the utmost if it took maybe Mr. Townsend a little bit of effort in putting our community team together to really see what could we do to keep that piece of property. That's one of the most wonderful things that we could do in honor of those who have been historical people in our town and maybe incorporate it in somehow. That's just my opinion. Okay?
Catherine, go ahead and...
Can we ask a question?
Did you stand up?
Can we ask a question?
No, one second. I don't know, one behind you had to stand up first.
I'm having trouble hearing everything you're saying, saying things correctly. We are talking about paying $350,000 a piece of property that may or may not be polluted, and the house may, may not be, uh, torn apart. That seems to be like a hell of a lot of giddy stuff here, to be putting up that fair money. Shouldn't we resolve that first?
The appraisal is the appraisal, and that's what two independent appraisals came up with. The contamination issue, potential contamination issue, is, is a non-issue according to the conversations we've had, based on historical use. And we, we've already had the well tested, and there were no issues with the well.
That's not true.
Which we did have done, okay, because we were allowed to go in and test the well water. And based on that, and what other historical uses of that property, there's, there doesn't seem to be any issue based on the, the surrounding property, what the, it was, it was a similar, it's always been a similar use over the years. So with that, there's confidence, and a lot of confidence, more than confidence, that there will be no issues with that site. Okay?
Repeat the question.
Can a resolution be revised to stipulate that that house be preserved? And again, I said it before, I would not want to bind the hands of the building committee or whoever, because if that property is integral, integral to that site and where that school is going to go, the house has to be moved or it has to go. And that's, and I, we're not gonna constrict that, that project by that. Okay?
Sorry, but the resolution is not a proper resolution. It does not have the price tag of the house and the property on there. Also, I'm sorry, but this property is adjacent to property. We have looked at, and I urge you all to look at, the results of the study that was done, the phase two study, that was not done until two months, two months, 63 days after the purchase of that property. That phase two study has some serious information in it. If you've seen the local Harbor News this week, you can see the article by Sean Lyons, who was a qualified person, who wrote about the property and about the contamination on that property. This property we're, we're discussing tonight, A, number one, we have, it has no price tag. They're asked to just give a blanket resolution for the purchase of this property. There was no price tag written in that. Number two, the disposition, I'm absolutely 100% with these people who I agree with, and we feel very strongly about. Shakespeare's Association feels very strongly about the preservation of this house because of its historical value. And that should be included in the resolution as well. So I urge you to vote this resolution as it stands down, because these things need to be included. And, there wasn't the proper testing. You haven't done phase one or phase two on that property to see if there's any possible contaminations. And that has not been done on this property you're being asked to vote on tonight. With all those things being said, I cannot see how you can go forward and vote for this property tonight and vote for this resolution.
David Burr. We finally need to pick up. Come to 6:15, motion to call a question.
Well, wait.
We have a motion to call a question in a second, Carl. Carl, I'll let you go. Go ahead.
I'm not totally familiar with the testing and what, all the issues. I like to tell you that I'm a contractor, been a contractor for 40 years. If, if I have lead paint on my house...
I can hear you. Louder.
I've been a contractor for 40 years, all right? And if I had a house, and I had lead paint on it, and I scraped it off, and it fell on the ground, the DEP would make me take all the soil off of that property, down to three feet, and dispose of it, all right? Probably at like $200 to $50 a yard, all right? Which is a lot of money, okay? Now, I've done, I do DOT work. I did a job in Greenwich, and there was a bunker, and it had lead paint all over the stones that I had to remove. They were gonna make me pay $10,000 to remove it, until I found that it was their responsibility. And their answer was this, we'll take all those stones and we'll grind them up. And now the percentage of lead to the, to the stone will be enough so we can put them in the landfill. And that's what they're doing here, is the way I understand it. They're taking the soil and mixing it. It's still there, all right? Now, you make your own judgment.
Motion in a second to call a question. If all in favor of calling questions, you can hold my second. Motion to call any questions.
Point of order, I think you need two-thirds for this. I believe you do.
Point of order, if you have one objection, you have to have a vote. It has to be two-thirds.
It's a hand vote, that's fine. All in favor of calling questions, please raise your hand. This means to bring it to a vote, it's not the vote. This means to bring it to a vote.
We could do that, I don't know, anytime. You can move the paper down anytime. Are you gonna do that, or will you do that? Are you gonna do that, or will you do that? I was just trying to see what, if it never passed, got sent up.
This is, this is one of those things where we both are in a lot of different directions. This is, it's just a shame, you know, what, you know, the feedback, you know, it's not, and I did speak loudly and say, don't confuse me with the recognition of that. And, uh, they wanna vote without knowing, without knowing.
The votes needed, the votes needed to carry to call the question, the votes needed were a hundred and thirty-two, based on who signed in. We had a hundred and thirty-nine.
Sounds like a Democrat meeting.
There's a motion on the floor to go with a paper ballot.
Yes.
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 There's a motion to go with a show of hands. Okay, second on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, with a show of hands, since the first motion was a paper ballot, we will have a show of hands.
Can I have a paper ballot?
Paper ballot. Show of hands for a paper ballot, please.
Yes. Yes.
Count our hands and they count the others' fingers.
Yeah. What? Handball. Handball. Handball twice.
This is a vote, this is a vote to have a, oh, my knee, not my finger.
That's a Tories and a- Why do you need a handball? It's a paper ball, it's a, a matured.
Okay, folks, I see the vote. Hands, in favor of hands was one hundred and twenty-three, and in favor of paper ballot was fifty, so the vote will be by a show of hands. Okay, all in favor of the resolution to purchase the property sixty-nine sixty-nine A killing return bike for the purpose of new Morgan schools, signify by raising your hand. What's the question?
Raising your hand to buy this property.
I'm sure you get my picture.
Okay. Safe from us.
It's what happens to your dad.
All those opposed, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Get them up there.
Why not for the both of you? They can't, they can't, why can't we?
See, they count our hands and they count their fingers.
Absolutely.
These people certified they count.
Something better than him.
Did you get town?
Didn't pass a quick one.
You did?
Yes. Can I catch it?
Motion carries a hundred and two to ninety-one.